You're watching Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Our fourteenth meeting of the planning board here at Whitcomb Hall, beginning with the roll call. Scott Self, I'm here, it's me, Richard Lane.
Here.
Mark Scalera.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Charlie Harbick.
Yeah.
Steve Malone alternate, Michael Scoggiou alternate, and Jane Johnson alternate. No alternates, and we don't need them, so we're good. The agenda this evening, we've got approval of minutes for the October 24th meeting, and no public hearings and discussions and other business. We have Warren article, rough draft review. We have Mike Buwerdy, but I think he's not going to be here, is that correct?
That is correct.
With the Civil Works New England, they have some more work to do.
They'll maybe schedule for the week first.
Okay, they're going to reschedule that. And we have Sherry Howard's zone change proposal, mixed use development general discussion, and any other business as required. Moving back to the top, we don't need a regional impact vote, because there's nothing on here. So we have the approval of the minutes for October 24th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Motion by Brandon to approve, is there a second?
Oh, okay.
Seconded by Michael, is there any further discussion or changes or objections to anything in there? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Oh, sorry.
You weren't here.
Yeah, I was, I was listening.
You were here in spirit, I heard you a couple of times. So, public hearings, none. Bring us on our discussions, and the first up is the Warren article, rough draft review. We all have it in our packet here. And that's the stuff we went over at our last meeting, or a couple of meetings anyway, and kind of decided definitions, and where those new definitions, I mean, where those, yeah, definitions are going to go. And I have a couple of things on here. Actually, it has to do with the business office, and we have the definition of business offices as "building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of businesses, industry, or government, which may include ancillary services for office workers, such as a restaurant, coffee shop, healthcare facility, daycare facility." In some of the zones that that's going to be in, for instance, rural ag zone, we don't allow restaurant, we don't allow coffee shop, and we don't allow healthcare facility. And then in business two, we don't allow a coffee shop, healthcare facility, or daycare. And what I'm getting at is that maybe we ought to just cross out that last sentence there. We can use and include the ancillary services in there for office workers, but we don't need to give those examples because they aren't allowed in all the zones.
We allow business offices in the rural ag district?
It's a special exception.
Oh, it's a special exception.
It's a special exception, but that's not part again sometimes, yeah. So if we don't allow those, we allow some of them in some of the zones, and some of them in some of the other zones. So if we leave it at just ancillary services for office workers, we can do it as a case-by-case basis as to what they want to put in there. If they wanted to put a daycare or something like that, and it would be ancillary to the business.
Solution, yeah.
Shall we do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Definitely should define what's allowed.
I think so too, okay, we'll cross that right out of there. That's all I have. Anybody else? Take a little peek through there. Want to read down them and walk through them, or we're good with that?
Now's our chance to ram our correct, so it could be read for that too.
Under the business offices where we just struck that section.
Yeah.
If they want to put in something, they would have to go, what, through zoning first and then to us? Well, to get a special exception?
If it was a paying one, you know, something like a, more like a business, if it's an ancillary service, you know, something that is clearly incidental to the main use of the property, then planning board can look at that to see. Then I think it's up to the planning board, or the planning board would be able to approve that. But if it's like taking outside people in, other people, not those people from that specific business there, then it would probably be a separate business. And if it wasn't allowed, then it wasn't allowed, I would think, you know, when we're deciding.
Probably in Swansea, given our scale, like if there was a daycare or a restaurant, they'd probably have to invite, you know.
And if they did, we'd have to see if it's allowed in that zone, and then if it wasn't, they would have to go to ZBA.
Kind of what I'm thinking of is something, say, like a CNS or something like that.
Yeah.
That has their own cafeteria. We approve something like that, but it's, they have to pay for their food, but they have, as an ancillary.
But it's for the employees of that building, right?
Yes. But it becomes, does it become a restaurant when they're having to pay?
I wouldn't think so, because the general public would not be using it, or not be purchasing their meals there.
The way I like to think about this is Keene State, they have, their primary use is educational, but they still have a dining facility, and they still have dormitories. But those two uses are ancillary because they're in support of the education piece. So it's kind of the same thing with, you know, hospital cafeteria. That cafeteria is strictly in support of the hospital. So that's kind of like what an ancillary use is, it's just in support of the primary.
But as a patient, I can go down to that and purchase something that.
And so could somebody offer a street view?
Correct.
Right? But it's ancillary to the.
Exactly, it's necessary for the primary use to function at its fullest capacity.
And again, it comes under site plan review. Wonder, our questioning of the applicant as to how you're going to use this, and are people coming off the street, and you have parking for it and all that or not? If it looks like they're going to use that as a business, then we'd have to treat it as such.
Yeah, if they start doing carryout out of their kitchen, then that's a separate.
Drive up or.
Yeah, that's a wholly separation.
As I say, your example, the pharmacy at the hospital is not really, you know, I don't think that would be included, because people can come in from the outside and.
Oh, yeah, that's where I go, go on.
Yeah.
So, in a case-by-case.
Yeah, I think it's a case-by-case.
Yeah, 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 so consensus, I guess.
Yeah, so, Pikiuni, why is it plural, business offices? Should it just be singular, business office?
Because we're taking, I think, into consideration more than one. If it's an office building, there are many offices in there, I think that's why we had it as plural.
I actually thought about that, and I think the main reason why I did that is because the definitions of building or buildings.
Okay.
And so I just wanted to, yeah, it's a. We could do either one.
It could be interpreted that we'd only allow one office there.
Yeah.
You know, someone, a neighbor could come in and say, well, that's those offices. There's more than one in that building there, so.
That's a good, that's a good, you know.
So let's see, are we going to read through these?
Cool.
Or am I going to read through these, rather? Just to check it off? Let's do that, because we have a public hearing coming up, and if there's something that we don't, you know, now's the time to change it. So let's see, amendment number one, and we are changing. Again, that has to do with the definitions. Amend section 13 by adding, amending the following definitions. And we're crossing out corporate offices and putting in business offices. And again, that would be "building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of business, industry, or government, which may include ancillary services for office workers." Period.
Okay, time, timeout, again, where we say section 13, should we add the word definitions, just so like if I'm sitting in the polling place and I'm wondering, well, what is that section?
Oh, yeah.
It wouldn't hurt, right?
No, it wouldn't hurt at all.
I'll call the legal, I don't think you'll have a problem, but I can.
No, that's what that section is, right, so, good?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, and we're service establishment, we're adding. That says "provides a skilled service, personal labor, or expertise, as opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity." And we're adding retail establishment, and that is sales in small quantities and/or direct to the customer. And we're getting rid of the definition for professional, so that's going to be all crossed out.
Yep.
We have amendment two, that is amend section four, article A dot two dot B, to read as follows. "In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after the issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment," and that's item B. Manufactured uses, we're crossing out corporate offices and putting in business offices. And industrial parks, but business offices putting in there. Amendment number three, that is amend section five, article A dot one dot F and G, to read as follows. "Use is permitted in the Village Business District One. No building or premise shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except..." And when we get down to F, we're crossing out retail business establishment and replacing it with retail establishment. And we're crossing out personal service shop or service establishment, and we're replacing it with service establishment. So let's see, that brings us up to amendment four, which is amend section five, article B dot one, is that dot one dot E? F and V, to read as follows. "Use is permitted in the business district. No buildings or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except..." And when we get down to E, we're crossing out professional and business offices and replacing it with business offices. Get down to F, we're crossing out retail sales services and replacing it with retail establishment. And when we get down to V, we're adding service establishment. Brings us to amendment number five, and that's amend section five, article C dot one dot E dot F and J, to read as follows. "Use is permitted in the Village Business District Two. No building or premise shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except..." And when we get down to E, we're crossing out professional business or corporate offices, replacing it with business offices. Get to F, we're crossing out personal service shop or service establishment and replacing it with service establishment. And when we get down to J, we're crossing out retail business establishment and replacing it with retail establishment. Brings us to amendment six, and that one is amend section six, article A dot one dot D dot six, 11, and 24, to read as follows. "Use is permitted in the commercial industrial zone. No building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except..." Get down to six, we are crossing out business and professional offices and replacing it with business offices. Get down to 11, we're crossing out retail sales and services and replacing it with retail establishment. Get down to 24, we're adding service establishment. No, there isn't, oh, there will be a 20, sorry. Now they bring this over to amendment seven, which is amend section six, article B dot two dot C, to read as follows. And we're crossing out permitted uses and changing that to uses permitted. "In the industrial park district, no building or premises shall be erected, altered, or used, and no land shall be used for any purposes except..." And when we get down to C, we're crossing out corporate offices and replacing it with business offices. And that brings us to the end of that, so, so far, so good?
Yep, I want to make a quick note. You see the slight inconsistencies with the numbering, the language, permitted uses, usage permitted, flip-flopped around. It's one of these that's numbered in numerical order, others are lowercase alphabet. That's on my list. Can't fix it this year, but I want to get rid of those inconsistencies. I want every section to be consistent with the last. It's on my list, I just wanted to put that out there in the world.
We did that last year with the site plan review regulations.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, we changed them all around, so.
So, we're going to have a very nice looking code in a couple of years.
That's right, if the voters allow us, they'll get sick of us, right?
We'll see.
I said, what are you guys doing here, anyway? Too much reading and voting.
Absolutely.
What did we zone?
So, are we still in the amendments? Because we need a motion to have these amendments go to, if we're done discussing the amendments.
I want to just verify something.
Okay.
Okay. The, we rezoned from Wilson, the boss, the south end of Wilson Pond up to 30, the Keene line.
Yeah.
What did we wind up, was it a business?
Village business.
Village business one.
Village business one.
Yeah.
Okay, have we done anything in our amendments to change the concept of what was?
What's allowed in that district? We did change, we removed some things that were allowed. I don't know if we added anything in there or not, but we did change that. I don't know if we all have current copies of it, I have got penciled notes of it in mind. And so we did.
We want to not have any new proposed uses. It's just a reword. That's my take, but I was waiting.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, I was waiting.
Yeah, oh, you mean for our current zone, I mean, for the changes we're doing now?
Yeah, but that, it doesn't have any effect.
No, it doesn't on that one, then nothing's effectively changing, no.
And that's what you're asking, right, Richard?
Pardon me?
You're asking if anything here changes what's allowed.
What we're doing now, does it change any, anything in the, what was the intent? And what was actually, you know, of the neighborhoods that they wanted to do? I just want to make sure that our change in definitions and stuff like that is not going to infringe on their concept, or on the concept we wanted to establish there.
No.
I don't believe it does.
I don't think it does, no. We allow business offices already in that zone. And it has the right wording too, business offices, we didn't have to change it. We took the professional part of it out of there.
One of the things I brought up earlier, we have under the section five, the E, H, and I, amended in March 2024.
That's when we remove something?
Yes, no, I understand that, but, you know, the thing is, what have we done?
What have we removed?
There's no reference there.
I don't recall what was removed from that, we'd have to look back in one of the earlier dates of that to see.
I envisioned an appendix, but.
Yeah. That's handy, though.
It would be handy, I love an appendix.
I'm sorry.
I agree with that completely, though, Richard, it drives me insane.
So, this is just a question, for readability, would it make sense to kind of underscore the districts that we're talking about?
I thought about it. I think the short answer is, I don't think we, I think we could, but then we have striked throughs, italics, and then we add underscores. It kind of just adds, it adds a lot of visual pop.
Then I underline mine as.
It's a good thought.
Because, you know, it's.
Yes, it's straight, right. It's definitely a good thought, I think the only thing we want different is the changes or proposals. Those are the only, yeah, but I see what you're saying.
Well, even where we say amendment number five, are you in favor of the adoption of the amendment that we change to this district? I don't know if we can add it in here, that might make it stand out.
I can write a quick, rough, how it looks.
We still don't want to confuse them either, though, I think that's what you're getting at as well.
Yeah.
The changes are usually the difference, you see the difference in there and say, oh, that's what they're changing that, but if we underline it, it might confuse them saying, well, are they changing that, or are they?
That was my worry, in previous years, we had, we didn't do that.
No.
I didn't want to differ anything from previous years.
No, I think we should.
Can we make a boldface?
Definitely, I don't think we can do a boldface either.
It's too confusing, it's confusing enough with the zoning ordinance, because most people aren't as familiar with it as we are.
Different color?
Yeah, it's confusing enough for them.
It is confusing enough, and a lot of people anyways, don't even read that.
Yeah, I'm usually a heavy user of boldface, and I always get complaints that it's harder to read, so. I try to tell them tone it down when I can.
Why are you doing that?
Right.
So I'll make a motion to.
Okay, a motion to approve the changes for the Warren article and proceed to public hearing.
I'll second it.
On our next meeting, okay, seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Good.
We're on the road. Yeah, we're on the road to that one. So, let's see, the next item B was the Mark Buwerdy, which, with Civil Works New England, map 22, lot 5, and they've got to do more work on that, so they won't be in time. Item C is Sherry Howard's zone change proposal.
Is she, is that her right there?
That's her.
Okay, you're up.
So we do have little area maps.
Yeah, we've got these.
So I did some mapping too, I have co-podies, they'll get more than.
New town.
This is the answer.
Sure. I am Beverly.
Oh, actually, no, I already have that.
All right.
You want to just get rid of my?
A lot of work, I'm going to take.
So, I don't know.
Give him a tripod. Tripod.
Okay, so what we're trying to do is, basically, we zone the road, because it is a commercial business. And there's always been residential homes there. And the map, I'm keen, that I put on, too, the whole one mile acre is all low density in single homes on the end of the road. So I was trying to be consistent, we're hoping to be, because most of these residents here on our Swansea end had no idea that they're in the commercial industrial zone and the business zone. So what we're proposing, based on what is on the residential lots, with zero living homes, and whereas the Keene end of the road is overall looked as a single family residence or conservation, and whereas Bayso Road is a class five road, is not wide enough to handle the commercial business flow, all the traffic, and is already overrun by trucks and business vehicles using it in the short run, making it unsafe for residents to walk and bike. And whereas the complete street map, street maps in the master plan identifies Bayso Road as a local collector, and all other local collector roads in the town are residential or rural roads, such as Wermack Road and Matthews Road. And whereas the master plan, economic development, objective two, action three, is review current zoning to ensure adequate land area is zoned for commercial industrial uses in the appropriate locations. And whereas lots on Bayso Road are backed in Swansea by Yale Forest on one side, and a large significant wetland on the other, which is, which the recent wetland evaluation by Moosewood Ecological listed it in the top 10% of Swansea's wetlands for flood storage and wildlife habitat, which creates a critical wildlife processing situation. And whereas the entire east side and half of the west side of Bayso Road lies atop of an aquifer, there is a zoning map on the town of Swansea dated 1997, that's mandated, and further men the following. "The lots fronting Bayso Road are now included in the business district and/or commercial industrial districts, exceptions below Route 10, shall instead be included in the residential district or the rural agricultural district." And then I have them all listed on how we, how they're, they're zoned now, and their lot numbers, and the property owners, and how we would like to see them zoned down the road.
Okay.
Okay, and then I did the map, what it is now. And several of these people have no idea that we want to keep these lots here, obviously commercial. Anything past New Run Brook, we want to have basically everything listed as residential. And there's only three lots here that are, they're actually businesses that are running now. Arlington Paving, Hill, Andy Hills, and Alka Restories.
What was the second one?
Andy Hill.
Andy Hill.
Yeah. So what I'm wanting to do is have it basically be like this. So we're basically going to keep all the commercial, obviously this is all commercial, but everything that's on Bayso Road, you state commercial, just a small section of the Humane Society here, which has an inlet between some lots here, have that just be consistent with just residential there, and they can keep the rest of their lot, which I know is in the commercial industrial zone, which they might, they're not really sure what their intention is, their intention is down the road, what they want to utilize it for, for their place, so. And then Arlington Paving, he's neutral at the moment, and his concern was, basically, it's not going to impede on his transporting vehicles like he's been doing right along since he started, which I don't believe it does. So that's the only thing that I was concerned with. Same thing for Andy Hills, which he's renting out the lot now. So basically, the three business lots that are there, they do what they've been doing right along, and then everybody else is zoned residential. It'll be consistent for the rest of the road, to be considered a keen.
Does the Humane Society have any frontage on Bayso Road?
Yes, lot 25.
25.
Yep, there's a small, little section, maybe not even a quarter.
Of this little thing, right there, okay.
Quarter of an acre, not even.
Right there, okay, thank you.
So that was the only thing that we, what we say, yeah, let's make it consistent and just zone it residential.
So lot 25 is a right-of-way for the Humane Society off of Bayso?
I guess you, I guess it's called right-of-way.
Not really, they own it, it wouldn't be a right-of-way, if you own it, that's your front.
Right, I don't know, yeah, the whole language.
Is there only entrance into that?
It's an entrance to basically down into this wetland, that's all that's back there. And everything on this, there's a brook that travels right across the back of these lots. It's extremely wet in that whole area now. So it's all wetland, pretty much, back there, so they can't expand anywhere. The same thing with Arlington, he's utilized his full lot as it is, Andy's utilizing his lot completely as well, too, so. You know, they're not looking to expand anywhere, which I know somebody had a concern before, too, which, you know, they're not doing anything further on that.
On your list.
Yes.
You show Hill as business, but you want to change it to residence, is he in favor of that?
He's neutral at the moment as well, so he's not as if he's going to be going out of business, he's renting it out at the moment, for multipurpose, I believe, to the Knack, one of the Knack brothers.
So what's your main concern for changing it to residential? You're trying to protect those properties, right?
Protect the properties from bigger businesses or developments moving in, and keeping the traffic down from any more huge commercial or developers coming in to, you know, kind of take over the area, which we don't believe the road can handle anymore, either.
Protecting the neighborhood, really?
Protecting the neighborhood and the whole conservation of the area, so it's huge.
Use that you're trying to protect it from?
Um, just commercial industrial.
Any business use, or, that business up there, it's not commercial industrial.
Right.
What we're talking about there.
Right, so basically, you know, if it's a small business, which is fine, that's been what's been going on anyway on this road. Anything that, like what has happened with a developer coming in and trying to put in 40 business units in a seven acre field would consume this wetland area and destroy a natural wildlife tract. That's, the whole area is huge habitat between Yale and the conservation area that we have.
And just a quick clarification, so you're concerned about businesses moving in, that would only really happen if the current property owners sold their, sold their land, but correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or developed.
Yep. Or they themselves wanted to develop, but then they would have to move, I guess, so.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to come to you anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we just were worried about a huge development, you know, coming in like had happened, which was total surprise, I mean, I don't think it can handle that, you know.
So let's see, on the right side there of your map, you know, starting with lot 29, because number 30 is DOT, that's going to remain different.
Yeah, these are both DOT, 29 is DOT.
29 is DOT as well, and 28, 27, 26, 24, 23. So, all of those lots backed up against that little brook.
Yep.
They aren't big enough to sustain any business anyway.
Exactly.
They're going to remain, yeah, so, they would remain residential, most likely.
Right.
No business going to build there. So then you have BDM, the next one, which is already business now.
Yeah.
Probably going to stay business.
Exactly.
Going to build a house in there. Then you've got the self-storage next up there, right? That's probably going to stay business, not going to build any houses up there.
Right.
Then you've got the subdivision there, that's 20-1.
Yeah.
Which is still a buildable lot. Then you've got the 19 and 8. Then you've got the nineteen and eighteen, which have houses on them right there, which probably unless they bought that twenty dash one, they aren't going to expand out there at all. So you've got that whole right side there, which is going to remain residential regardless of what happens. Regardless of whether you change it to residential or leave it to business. So you, you remark about now on the left-hand side there, you've got lot number five, six and seven. Possibly something could happen in there, I suppose. There are bigger lots. There's not wet down in there, so that's a possibility there.
They're not wet up there and it's most likely land and, but, you know, Yale Forest is right.
Yeah, so, and number thirteen, isn't that Yale as well?
Yes, it is.
So nothing's going to happen there.
Right.
Then you've got Hill, which is already business.
Yes.
Then you've got your house, which actually is business. You're running a business out of there.
Small business, yeah.
Yep, it's a business anyways. Then you've got lot sixteen, which is residence, and it moves up to the, so.
Yale Forest.
Really, Yale Forest. So you've still got, you know, only one, you've got lot number sixteen, which is residence, which could go to a small business, not a very big lot, could go to a small business. And then you've got down closer towards, uh, the bottom there, seven, six and five possibly could go to a business there. Again, there's not very much that's going to go to a business, unless they sell, of course. But you've got those guys in the commercial industrial, six, seven.
Yeah, those are all, yeah, that's all in commercial industrial, which is kind of crazy, even these over here.
Sort of is, but you know, from the property owner's standpoint, the value of their land is worth more in that district because of what can go onto it. You know, if they wanted to sell their property there, again, it's all in the value of, as to what you can put on it. You know, restrictions on it would decrease the value of your property.
These, these people here, are you talking about?
I'm talking about those, yeah.
Okay.
Why are they not colored in? You've got them proposed as residents.
Yeah, residents.
Why do you not have them colored in?
I just blocked them around just to make sure you knew that those were, were in the commercial zone.
Okay, okay. But you're proposing that they be part of.
Yeah, everything, yeah, everything from here is all residential.
Got it.
So, um, and those are all single family homes and they don't have any, any intention of selling or, um, starting a business.
Again, means they remain as.
They're fine with the change. They've signed up on it already.
But I'm saying.
They'd rather have it be zoned residential.
But only because of what they.
They want to safeguard it from having any more heavier traffic.
Larger businesses in there. You're talking about big businesses in there, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, with those lot sizes up there, there aren't going to be too many big businesses going in up there unless, what is it, Yale Forest there?
This is all Yale Forest?
Yeah.
Yeah. So Yale Forest is not under permanent conservation, they could decide to sell tomorrow.
I know they could. We've spoken to them a bunch of times on, on that property all down through Route 10 and they, they never have any intentions of selling it or doing anything with it.
Right.
So what I'm hearing you say, Scott, is that you're, that because it's currently a business district that's functioning as a residence district, that there's no, uh, because of the size of the lots, there's no danger or no, there's no likelihood that, um, even that if it were to, that there would be a conversion to the zoned use, given the size of the lots. And therefore it would be sensible to maintain the existing business.
Well, I don't know about, we haven't gotten that far with it, sensible to maintain it, but I'm just running down the, the reasons why that they want to change up there, you know, what they think is going in, what they think is going to happen to clarify what we're doing here.
Because, because in the, in the, um, the, whereas the text here, I think some really compelling points are made that are more, more, um, more overarching than specific lots, um, talking about Bayso Road being a class five road and a local collector. And making the point that all other local collector roads in town are residential and/or rural roads.
I don't know that for a fact.
I, I knew, there's a section, the only exception, exception to that is there is a section of the westport village road between Defendees and the bridge or something that is also zoned business. But it's the same as Bayso Road. There's really not a lot of businesses there. It's more of a neighborhood.
Yep, and, and again, those businesses there are probably going to stay there that are i- i- in that business zone now.
Yeah, the big, the big commercial guys.
And they seem to be doing okay with that road, regardless of its size, I guess.
For, yeah.
Yeah. And there's no through, no through truck, truck traffic, but you still get truck traffic.
Oh, I watched an eighteen wheeler.
Which has nothing to do with rezoning. I mean, we could have been stopped that.
Yeah, the eighteen wheeler went through with a, you know, a tanker truck at six thirty in the morning.
Yeah, I know.
It's like, okay, you're not delivering on the road here, but I've watched it all the time.
Yeah, I know. I, I wouldn't stare at something like that on that road. I know, that's a, that's a skinny little road.
Short cut to go between.
I know, I do. Yeah, right. So we want to prevent any more, you know, big operations coming in.
So.
That's the point.
There's also a possibility of putting it, you mentioned small businesses perhaps, but not big businesses. There's also a possibility of rezoning it to business one, which will, like we just did in North Swansea over there, which doesn't allow some of the larger things in there, but allows a smaller neighborhood type of businesses to go in there. That's a possibility.
Small businesses, are, are people able to run small business in a residential area as it is?
Uh, it's home occupations, but not small businesses. You know, it has to go through the planning process to be a small business.
Basically, we'd rather, we'd rather just keep it all residential like we're planning. I'd like to go with.
Can I, just a quick comment. Our ongoing, uh, court. Battles are over. Our ongoing court, um, relationship with, uh, all purpose storage. I see in the proposal that you would like to rezone their property residence, and then there's a rural agricultural, and then there's a wet.
Which, yeah, which I wasn't sure what you can do or can't do, so.
I don't know for sure. I, I would have to talk to people who are higher above me. But I would give my opinion that that whole property, tho- those three properties are outbound. And I would say put a big red line around it and I wouldn't want to touch those. But that's just my opinion. I, I can make clarification on that, but I don't believe those should be included.
Which three that?
Me, you talking about twenty-nine?
All-purpose stores, so twenty, twenty-one, dash one and twenty-one.
Right, so there's still an.
Just due to ongoing legal concerns, I, I don't believe that those properties should be touched. However, I'm not, you don't have to go through me to do this.
Right, you never know down the road what that is, that decision becomes, and then it can be evolved from there, I would think.
Yep, so the, the town can still vote to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, the town can still, and as a body, vote to put that residential over there. But it means that the developer will probably take a decor and win because of what you just said.
Yeah.
So that's, I kind of have a clarification of what can happen.
Spot there. You're taking that property from a hundred thousand dollar value per acre. You drop it to only three or four thousand dollars. So you're actually stealing money from the person who owns that property.
Yeah, no, that's right. It's not a good, I, we'd, we'd lose that battling for it, I'm sure. We'd spend a bunch of money defending it, but we'd lose it.
I, I just think that that whole property, that you just put a big red line around it, it's just not touching. That would be my opinion, of course.
So can we just zone it, those, those lots business and leave it and everything else alive?
I wouldn't even touch them. I wouldn't even propose anything for those lots. Just keep them as they are.
Right, which is business.
If they're business, yep, they're business. I would just leave them business.
So basically we're going to just zone, we, we zone lot fourteen, twenty-two, twenty and twenty-one, uh, just business and everything else is residential.
Still just a h- hazard way of doing it. You know, like spot, spot zoning is what that's called, you know.
Right, but I think it deserves a consideration because considering the road. And you're not dealing with just Swansea. You've got to be concerned of Keans and as well, I think.
Yeah.
You know, overall.
But, you know, they aren't supposed to be going through, so Keen shouldn't have anything to do with it. Should be coming back through here. And if they do go through, it has nothing to do with us.
Doesn't happen.
No, but again.
It's a split road, which is pretty odd.
It's enforcement and nothing else.
So, so one point I think I'll make is, you know, because of the wetlands there and the significance of those wetlands, in my opinion, it's a lot easier to, have a lot less risk when it's residential versus commercial or business, whatever. You know, I think a lot of times with, um, type of, depending on the type of businesses in there, people just get a bit more forgetful and there's more chance of hazardous materials or, you know, things leaking. And so that's just one, one concern. I think it's a, an important point to make.
Lots of things could happen, you know, are we seeing that? You know, are we seeing chemicals leaking into the wetlands over the last ten years, twenty years, fifteen years? I don't know. You know, the planning board addresses those problems pretty well, I would say, throughout the years as far as hazardous things, oil storage tanks, fuel oil, all that type of stuff when we do a site plan. And I haven't heard of that happening in any of the wetlands, even though it could happen. But again, lots of things could happen.
Yeah.
You know, their whole industry is built on that. The insurance industry is built on, boy, things could happen, but.
Well, that's why it's for planning, right? You're planning into the future for what could happen.
We are planning, yeah, yeah. And then use the planning board in the site plan approval to see that that doesn't happen. But that's a, it's a good piece of land up there. Again, what Adam brought up about it being in litigation there, of course. You know, the town, like I say, the town can vote it in there, whatever happens there, but the town will have to defend it and most likely lose if it goes to court. But bringing down to the rest of it there, they're just, in my opinion, there aren't enough properties there that are going to be developed into the businesses that you're trying to keep out of there. You know, it could be, you know, you could have a little pocket of residential down there in the industrial zone there, commercial industrial. To me, it doesn't make any sense if they aren't going to sell, which they probably maybe never will sell, who knows? But if they aren't going to sell anyways, it's just going to remain the way it is. The only property that may change is the one that started this whole thing, which is up there, those storaging center. And if that's residential, I do believe they could still go with a special exception for multifamily in there. So even if you're residential, you could get, uh, something in there. You probably will get something, but you're probably going to get a business in there since it's under litigation. But again, getting back to the zoning there part of it, I see your point. I see what you, you guys are talking about, what you want to keep out of the, the big things there, because it's a residential neighborhood, which I would too. And that was a whole idea of North Swansea with that business one. What was done over there was because of that. And that's a possibility you might want to consider using business one over there. Uh, I don't know. And again, it's a planning board, you're in here discussing with the planning board whether we decide to do it or not. You, you can still go to it with the voters with twenty-five signatures, I think is all you need. Put it on a warrant, just as it is, so. We're just giving your opinion on.
Right, I know. That's why I wanted to make sure. I mean, because I do consider that, but I was hoping that you kind of could see how obvious.
I can see that's obvious, but I can see also it's obvious that it's going to pretty much remain the same for the size of those lots and you've got the restrictions with the wetlands behind, especially those lots on the right-hand side there.
So if it remains the same, why not zone it residential? That doesn't make sense to me, that why wouldn't you just change it?
And, and it's fine for you to do that. I, I don't think, I don't think the planning board should start doing spot zoning because we're going to have people in here all the time on, well, you did it for them, we're going to do it for this. You have a little spot zoning all over the place. It doesn't have to be business, even though it's zoned business, it doesn't mean that business is going to be there, as you can see, it's residential a lot of it.
Right. So basically if we just zone it all residential, and then the, the guys that are there now running their commercial businesses, they do what they're doing, like they have been.
It takes, it takes away from their property. You're taking their property by doing that. You're taking what they can do with the business there. Yeah, they're running in business fine right now, but when they want to change it, if they want to change it, or if they want to sell it or something like that, then they're restricted, or if they don't use the property for a year, then it returns to that, that residential zone and then it's no business anymore for them.
Right. So we're not seeing anybody having a conflict with that from what conversations I've had with both of those people in those business lots.
Yeah.
So Arlington's not going to move and he's not changing, he's not going to go out of business. And Andy is trying to clean up his lot and probably sell it, but not intentionally for business.
For residential?
Probably.
Which one is that?
It's a brown zone.
That's the Hill construction on that side there?
And technically it's probably a brown zone at this point. And nobody's probably even been over there to test the water samples from, from off of that lot.
Well, I think I mentioned to you before at that last meeting we had there that turning those into residential, that when they're business now, makes them non-conforming. And anything they want to do, that includes your lot too.
Yeah.
Anything they want to do, you have to go to the zoning board of adjustment for, not a special exception, for a variance to do, to make any change to the business at all.
Okay.
And that's not.
It's much harder to get.
Yeah, but it, it's supposed to be hard to get, you know, so you can't do.
It's got to show a, uh, what do we call it?
Hardship?
Yeah.
You're going to show hardship.
A hardship. They're approved hardship.
So what kind of changes are we talking? Because I don't see anything being changed in those lots.
You mean change as far as business goes?
Right.
For, I mean, I'm talking about change of use. Yeah, the lots are probably going to stay the same size.
Right.
But as far as uses go, if you bring them down to residential, there are far fewer uses business-wise that they could do on those lots there. Or if they wanted to expand their business, if they wanted to put an addition on, uh, go higher or, or, you know, yeah, maybe put an addition or add a little building somewhere else, they wouldn't be able to do it unless it went to ZBA.
They'd have to come to you anyway, though, right?
Well, they have to go to the ZBA first to get a variance before they come to the planning board. They'd have to come to the planning board afterwards because they are a business still in residential zone.
Right.
But it removes from them the ability to do that, to change it, or if they wanted to change the type of business there as well.
Yeah, because I, I don't see that happening.
No.
I don't see that being a problem, period.
I think they probably would.
Do you think your trustee ruler, I'm wondering what the length of Bayso Road is in the proposed.
I don't have it, and it, it wouldn't work on that anyways, my ruler, it wouldn't work on it, but I don't have it with me.
Does anybody know?
The length of the road?
Yeah.
Adam can tell us. Adam can tell, yeah, I can tell.
And we're a half a mile in Swansea and the rest of their road in Keen is a mile.
Okay, so this is half a mile.
We have a half a mile, yeah.
Okay, okay.
From the, from the Keens, from Keen line to Route nine. Route ten is about three quarters of a mile.
Okay.
So not quite a mile, but point seven one.
Okay.
From Route ten to the Keen line?
Mm-hmm.
And then from, what about from Route, from the Keen line to Route nine?
Oh, is that even on your map?
Oh, boy, Route nine. I'm not, oh, I mean, if they were going to Keen, I don't.
Because from Swansea line to the Route ten, I have it blocked. That is a half a mile.
Swansea to Route nine is like point, point eight. If you take out the, if you're just going a straight line, it's like point nine, but.
So it's almost a mile.
Almost a mile.
Right. Okay.
Roughly.
And let's see, and the zoning in Keen is all residential or I think there are a couple of other uses there.
Density, single family.
That, yeah, conservation, I think, land, conservation land in there.
Yeah.
Low density.
I have it mapped.
And, and there aren't any businesses up in there either.
No.
So that's a difference as well. There are already businesses here in this part of it. So I guess that doesn't have much to do with, with what we're doing here.
Does it make sense to, I would motion to move this to business with the exception of twenty, I mean, to residential with the exception of twenty, twenty dash one and twenty-one? Have a public hearing and see what the public has to say?
It depends what you want to do. If you don't want, if you want it strictly residential, then, you know, the planning board can do that, but there would be two separate items if we did that.
Okay.
She'd have one for residential, we'd have one for business, and it'd be real confusing then for people to.
Yeah, no, I actually, I mean.
Yeah, I'm changing it to. Business one, you said.
And then residential.
Residential. And which lots are that? Are they?
Well, everything from lot five on up with the exception of the, um, three that we should not deal with at this time.
Fourteen, yeah, oh, yeah, BDM, twenty-two.
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty and twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two and fourteen are okay with whatever at the moment from where I had discussions with all of them.
So your point being just to give the public a chance to weigh in?
I think, I think more information might, might be helpful. I don't know if it makes sense to do that or not, but.
I guess it, yeah, it depends if the group wants to do it. I, I think we should leave it alone. But we can, if you want to make a motion there and you get a second, we can vote on to whether you bring it to a, a public hearing or not. That means, if we have a public hearing, that means we have to have the proposal of what we're going to do, obviously.
So I basically can easily have twenty-five signatures to put it on.
So, yeah.
Let you know.
To go on like that.
That's going to happen.
So, yeah, if.
And that's fine.
If, maybe, maybe that's the route you ought to take then like that, um, just to see and let the voters decide on it.
Figure it out from there and if they have questions, we can.
Have your neighbors talk to your neighbor and their neighbors and all that type of stuff.
Because I've spoken to almost everybody on the road already.
Yep, then, then it wouldn't be the planning board spot zoning, it would be the public spot zoning.
Right.
And then we have nothing to do with that.
Well, and I think the planning board's approval or its approval needs to go on to the amendment as well.
It does, yeah, and we still have to have a public hearing with your amendment.
Still so far.
But we can't change it. Just have the public hearing, that's all.
Yeah.
Members, that way we shall do?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm in favor of this, um, and I'm in favor of it because I, I. I'm in favor of this, um, and I'm in favor of it because I, I think we ought to identify it as what it actually is. I don't see any downside. It already is residential.
It's both, though. It's business there too, you know.
But it's primarily residential.
And residential outweighs the business.
Yeah, you know, and I see, I see what you're doing, and yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make me jump off the roof if it were, you know, zone residential, really. But just from planning perspective, I would, I'd like to see it left alone, that's all. And that's your aerial from looking from, is that looking from Keene?
It's.
Yeah, it is from Keene. Yeah, it is, okay.
And this is basically.
Yeah, and that's that big field there that would, that brought this whole thing up.
Same here.
Big field.
And this is the wetlands that I don't think anybody gets to see, so it's pretty big.
Yeah, and nothing ever going to happen to those. No building going on in there, anything that's always going to stay there regardless of the zone.
I mean, and then, you know, back of Arlington's lot is right here.
Yeah.
And he's utilized it when he can, and then all of this.
So he's not expanding, so you aren't going to get any more traffic off of him.
Right.
So that's going to remain the same.
Yeah.
So I don't see.
I remember the wet, I walked out a lot, and I remember the wetland delineation is right to the property line.
Yeah.
That's, that's a concern for, for me.
Well, then, they would, if they developed it, they'd have to get it, well, they did have a soil scientist in there, that's right, I walked out a lot too. But they'd have to get a soil scientist certify where that delineation was.
But one of the things we'll be talking about next week is, you know, buffers and stuff like that.
Curious as to when this got its own business. Couldn't find a definitive date. Doesn't matter in the grassy things, but.
I'm curious too.
Well.
Well, thank you.
Well, I'm sure come in, do we want to set a date for a while for the public here? Or do we want to wait till we have signatures?
Nice way to get some things.
Would you find out how soon or how late it can go before, or to be able to get it onto the warrant for March?
Let them sign, let them figure.
There's a minute in January.
It's not February?
It might be February.
Yeah, we can have public hearings up until our last, January, your first meeting in February. I have dates, I just don't remember the time ahead. Uh, but her first date, she proposed a zoning amendment was November 11th, so we're still in the beginning stage. Jerry, yeah, if you want to, you know, you want to get on it, get those signatures pretty soon because we're just discuss, discussing the planning board is limited as to how we can, how close to the public, uh, to voting, we can hold the public hearings.
Okay.
So get on it sooner than later.
I have dates, I'll send them to you in, you know. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I have them, so I'll email you tonight with those dates.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome.
So we have, um, mixed use development, general discussion, and we have some things in our packet about mixed use. So what is this about, Adam?
It's about a lot of things. It's about, uh.
Oh, yeah, you're doing minutes, yeah, let's.
Sorry, so. All right, okay, so here's, here's where this whole thing started, I guess. Currently, uh, the Business and Economic Affairs Department.
Bless you.
Um, is rolling out a program called Housing Champions. That essentially, we can, we can apply to be designated as housing champions, even though Swansea has built the most multifamily housing of any small town in New Hampshire, we still have to apply in the world to, we still have to apply for this designation. What this designation does is it opens up more routes to funding for developers who want to build. It's a good thing. It doesn't cost us anything to apply for it, and it's not a competitive application. You apply for it, we get the designation if we get enough points, and then more funding opportunities become available to us. That's it. Where, where some sticking points come into play is we don't have a lot of, of what they want to see a town have as far as ordinances go. One sticking point is a mixed use zoning ordinance, not saying a new ordinance. We don't even have anything saying mixed use. And so we were looking at this and we're figuring out, how can we submit a better application to invest in H to get this housing champion designation, right? We can adopt more of the policies they want to see people adopt, um, so we can define mixed use, for an example. We just wanted to, I wanted to spark a conversation. I, I think in order, in the future, in order to get some more funding opportunities at the federal level, we need to change some things in our ordinance, we need to adopt ordinances, and we need to become more flexible with what uses we allow in what districts. Just wanted to see what the, and, and we wanted to use mixed use as a jumping off point for that. We allow mixed use and VB2 right now. It's not called mixed use, but we allow multifamily, commercial, business uses. That's just allowed in VB2, right? So we could add in our definition of VB2, we could add, this is a mixed use zone district. Kind of scary, but.
And then we'd have to define it, obviously.
And then we would have to define it. We would need to add a definition for mixed use, which could be any number of definitions. There's a lot of our sister cities, yeah, have.
Primary residents, primary non-residents.
Yep, um, so we would need to define it, and then we would also need to stay in that definition or in the zone definitions and what if it's supposed to go there. So another thing we can do is in the business district, just as an example, um, if you build a, if you want to build mixed use, um, instead of getting a special exception for your, um, multifamily, it would be allowed by right if you're doing mixed use. If you're not doing mixed use, you have to get a special exception. Just making it, taking down roadblocks to putting out more creative developments, essentially.
So what they're saying is that we'll pay you money to alter your ordinance to the way we think it should be.
Not pay us, not pay us money, but.
They're paying somebody money.
There, more funding, yeah, more funding would become available, is, is how.
To the, to the builders then, not to the town, right?
Well, we, we would apply for it on, on their behalf.
Yeah.
So they would make it easier for them to develop on, in Swansea, essentially. So we, it would be attracting businesses to Swansea.
No, probably multifamily, since they're talking about mixed use, they want us to add residential. And we're doing pretty good on that, as you mentioned.
Well, we're doing, yes, we are doing very well on that.
So I don't know, I think our ordinance is okay without it. Seems how we've attracted a lot of multifamily here to begin with, without that, without taking their care.
Yeah, and so I don't disagree with that at all. I just, I wanted to bridge the topic because we don't have multifamily listed in our ordinance, and I think we're one of the few.
Mixed use, right? I'm just keeping you straight.
Mixed use.
Because you're keeping the minutes there.
Yeah.
I'm going to add that.
This is, I'm going back in the recording on this one. Um, so we don't have mixed use mentioned at all in our ordinance.
Yeah.
And so if we wanted to, if we wanted to try to get in line with other smaller municipalities that do have mixed use, this is a good opportunity to do so. Right now, we kind of go, and I think it's fine that we don't do everything they're doing, right? That, that's fine, I'm cool with that. But if we at least define it, that maybe opens up an avenue to do it in the future.
You know, let's see how it works, let's see how it works out for them first.
Yeah.
This is probably something new with this new funding for the mixed use and that type of stuff. So let's see how it works out for them.
I just.
The funding was to help with the talent services and the infrastructure, but the town, you know, needs to support stuff like that.
Back to impact.
Back to impact.
Then that resonates with me.
Yes.
I feel like, you know, as far as the big box structures, um, I think we got to let the smoke clear and see, you know, where it lands.
Yeah.
Right, I'd love to see more, you know, single family residential, that type of stuff go up. I think that really makes for a very nice classy, um, community.
It does, and people are putting roots down in the community, you know, when you buy a single family, whereas you're being in one of these high-rise apartment, you aren't putting roots down in the community.
Mixed uses, you know, having that, you know, series of retailer service shops and apartments above it, I'm okay with that. But.
And to be fair.
Part of the big stuff, I think we got to just take a deep breath for.
Yeah.
Right. Two things, one, where? Where?
Where?
Where are you willing to do this?
Which district?
Our, our la, available land is not really conducive to something like that. But my second thing is, with if we apply or we develop these funds, what are the attachments?
Changing your ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they say.
But what other, what other things come along with federal money?
That's probably enough, they want, you know.
Not kidding, seriously.
People will watch what's going on. The big push is to increase density, to do away with single family homes. That's the question. In this state, there's one reason why you don't want the government we have now, but I choose a better choice than the one that ran against it, because it made it worse.
She's probably watching now, you know.
Why?
Watching on me.
So this program, the Housing Champions Program, that's a New Hampshire program or a federal?
I think it's a New Hampshire.
Okay.
You mentioned federal dollars.
Yeah, yes, so New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs.
Administrator.
Sorry, yeah, so, um, we, again, we're going to do this anyway because it's cost us nothing, it's just cost some time, and we don't.
Get the designation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we get a designation. We, we might not even qualify, we might not get enough points to qualify, even though we've built the housing. That's, that's kind of the frustrating part. We've already built the housing, we still might not qualify because we don't have these ordinances in place. We have an ED ordinance, that's one thing they want to see. They want to see a manufactured housing ordinance, which we have that listed in our ordinance, so I think we can qualify for that. But there's a lot of areas where we don't necessarily qualify, and I think this is trying to get us back. I think this is trying to get us into the modern day with some of this stuff, uh, where mixed use is a very common, um, way to do that. Where if you want to build a coffee shop and some apartments above it, you should be able to.
Yeah.
And why, why wouldn't you be able to, right?
Right, so.
You can now, it's just a special exception.
So you're thinking about this is that you're going to apply to get this designation?
Yeah. Not till the spring.
And what, what will we, what will accrue to Swansea if we do succeed in getting that designation?
Maybe nothing, yeah, it depends on who wants to build in Swansea, and then, yeah.
And, and is there certain zones that you put this in, or?
No, it just Swansea would be a quote housing champion, which.
But if it's, if it's mixed use, I'll get you.
Well, mixed use would have one of the areas.
One of the areas, but mixed use would have to be some, somewhere in the business. So we're talking about business and residential.
The problem with mixed use is that it's usually it's on the zone district, right? You don't have a mixed use.
Oh, sure, yeah.
We're not adding mixed use on the district, we're not saying we were going to add a mixed use on the district. Um, I'm saying it's probably going to go in, uh, VB2 is already a mixed use zone district. It's not called it, but it is one. We allow.
Sure.
It is, we allow multifamily, commercial, business, all by right. You can, you can build, go forth and prosper as a mixed use right now, the mill is a great example of that, you know. So that would just be functionally our mixed use zone district, and then we would take down some barriers in existing districts, possibly.
I'm just not, I'm just not clear yet why we want this designation.
It's all about lowering barriers to entry, so.
But we, we haven't really had too many barriers for entering, if you look at what we've done.
That's true, they have had to, a lot, some of these projects have had to get variances. Some of these variances are, so one of them in the industrial park district, um, that was a strange, that was a strange one. But this essentially is just lowering the barriers. I mean, if you want to build something and you have the land to build it, I think the thought is you shouldn't be able to build it.
The barriers are the regulatory steps that you would have to take.
So you shouldn't need a special.
By zoning board or planning board.
Essentially, yeah.
Maybe we can set up.
Well, planning board, planning board is still, planning board is always going to be a comp.
Yeah.
So it's just really just zoning.
Goes to us first, though.
Yeah.
Before it gets in there.
Richard, I just want to be sure that if we got that designation, that is not going to be used as a leverage to put in something or to go.
It would, it would, it's far, I can see it would.
Yeah, so we, you know, think, what guardrails would we want to have?
By not doing it, that's the, that's the guardrail about that, I mean. Unless we put it over on Base Hill Road.
She's, oh, there.
She's probably watching.
But it's still in there.
Okay, so that's wary of that type of thing.
I, I don't know this to be fact, but I think when you get state funding or federal funding, some of that overrides our own ordinances.
Our own expressives.
Is that what?
Unless the state changes it, the state could, isn't that right?
Yeah.
The state can change.
Right, that is our orders. With, what is the acronym for that? We're not home rule.
Home, right.
Right, Billings Rule, Billings Rules, which says the state has the ultimate authority.
Yeah, right.
Uh, we've been trying to change that with a constitutional amendment, command you something. We want to addition, but things can be here after that, we're going to push that again, and when we get it finalized, I'll bring it so you guys can see it. We're not, we're towns have the final say in that land use. Whatever we want to do. And we're fortunate, right now, we now have Sly as a representative. So.
So by becoming, housing champion, it's a silly term, but, um, by doing that, we, we then become eligible for two additional sources of funding, infrastructure funding and per unit production grants.
We being Swansea, what does the developer become?
Well, I assume, I think, I think the thought is if you need to make infrastructure improvements to build the development, you could get funding. So just for an example, um, if you wanted to build something, but sewer, our sewer didn't go to that property.
Yeah.
That you could get a grant to then build sewer to the property, you know, something like that.
And then, and then wait for.
Or it's that capacity, that's a whole separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, West Swansea, yeah, that's a whole separate issue, but, yeah.
I don't know, I'm feeling kind of burned by the pace of what's happened in the past couple of years, right?
Well, if you've seen the prices of these units, I think I would agree, I would agree with you, because these units are in crazy, crazy prices.
These units, which units?
Uh, I forgot what, which one it was, it was off of 12, um, but the prices for a one bedroom was like 2,000.
For rent?
Yeah, for rent, so I, if the rents aren't going, if we're building more and the rents aren't going down.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand.
Have a bunch of DPD in there.
West Swansea practice, they start as a thousand for a studio.
Wow.
But I think it's a good, we already allow mixed use in VB2. So essentially, a lot of these criteria, it would make it easier for people to build, that's full stop. If we enact these ordinances, it makes it.
You're struggling.
So is he? Yeah, I'm with Mark, it was easier for them to build single family homes and I think that'd be more.
Well, they're not taking away that ability.
No, but I mean, they are pushing towards that, they're pushing towards something different.
Plus to get rid of single family homes.
Yeah.
Extensively.
Yeah.
So.
And might have different thoughts about that, if you had a whole bunch of developers coming in, buying up farmland and putting a big, you know, development, you, you might think differently, but we don't have that neither. So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's ways to resolve that, just increase the zoning lot size.
Increase the sewer, I mean, got to go out there.
Yeah, the sewer.
We got it, and then they'd follow it, yeah, so.
All right, good, this was just the poll interests?
Yeah.
Poll the interest.
What was your result?
Consensus, I think that, yeah, it's probably, no.
I do, yeah, I, well, I still think we're going to, I mean, we get the designation, that, we don't have to do anything, but.
But you probably won't be looking for a letter of recommendation from the planning board, right, to go along with that.
Yeah, we don't need it, we don't need it.
Don't get us in trouble.
Yeah.
Take a whole breath.
Yeah.
If you, sorry, if you get the designation, it's going to be a known fact, and can that not be turned around and used as a leverage to force us to do something with it?
We don't have to, we're not being forced to do anything. It just opens up additional funding sources for people who want to build in Swansea. So if they want to build in Swansea and we have this, then we might get some infrastructure improvements if we get a grant for it, you know, like, it's not a bad thing. And you guys, you guys are still going to see the application come into planning board.
We can't, we can't deny, you know, that's.
I think infrastructure, I mean, if we get infrastructure improvements because of this, that's, that's a net positive. Obviously not sewer, because we're already at a capacity.
Until next, but.
So what infrastructure improvements would you like to see?
It's not my, it's, it's not, it's, if we have a development that comes in.
Can I rip this up right now?
No. I encourage you to read about it because it's not, it doesn't cost us anything to get the designation and it only opens up sources of funding for people who wanna build. And those are taxpayers.
They're like knowing what from the bill. Those for water. What show we have sand.
Oh, Housing Champion, New Hampshire.
Because the bill is still.
Worked out phase, is it a bad thing?
Then brings us past mixed use development, I think.
Until next time.
We're into other business. Let's see, how about, Mike, you update us on the CIP? And I promise I won't badge you with my stand like I did the last time.
Sorry.
If you go into his office, there's a girl who sent him out for him. And it would, on these, you would see a line that says contributions, the cash. That's the line that should tax us. That money comes from your taxes. When we're not in the year, we vote whether to put money into the capital. Corporate.
For, for various capital programs, right? For fire and police, things like that.
These committees are starting by the way to be called in a positive direction for your impact fees. Now, I know this Scott had concerns about our family not being able to afford it. Well, we don't have to do those numbers that you saw.
Right, exactly.
We could do some better numbers than that, okay? Well, what we did this last week, we got a little week to do a lot more too. We did Mount Caesar Library and the youth edition and elevator is gonna be moved off another year because those are $150,000 a piece. Okay, so I'm moving them over, if they're okay. They gotta have a little, they don't have a bathroom on the second floor, so we're gonna try to adjust that. But other than that, they went pretty good. We're gonna put a, a one time, well, we're gonna level one, give them 50,000 for three years of road to help that, 300,000 they need for those other two additions. And then it'll go back in 28, go back to 5,000 to put in that account. And then on Stratton Creek Library. So we didn't change a lot, but we didn't have, we thought it was $14,000 for a balance, but it was actually only 9,000 to go with the trustees. So what we did there, we did a one time, this next year, a one time increase to 15,000 for the, the CIP cash contributions and then level back up to 5,000 on that.
What do they got going up over there for approvals for that?
They have that system that they're gonna put in this year. And there's still, we don't have solid numbers. We're giving them 15 for it, not knowing if that's gonna be enough or not at this point. Staffing the button will be okay. There's also a new heating system that's pushed out to the 28th. And they're gonna put many splits in, so we don't know if we're gonna use. At this point, they gotta come back to us because they don't really know what they're gonna do. That is the primary source and how the boiler is a backup or not. We're assuring that the boiler will be okay for a short term, but eventually something has to be done there. And what we got, we got 15 right now. And there's a placement on that. The other thing that we're doing for range, we get that page here. And you know this last year, they're looking at, if you went there, they raised $110,000 from the floor, which has a direct, it doesn't come out of the capital cash dollars, it's a direct from the taxes. They have one grant they may be getting for windows and stuff, and we're telling them to hold on because the foundation has to be raised and I think it's like 13 inches or something like that. We told them if they did that, then it probably gonna destroy the windows there.
What'd they have to raise it for?
It sunk in one area.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
And did they?
It's like in the old.
Did they spend that whole hundred grand on that roof?
Yes.
They just.
There might be a few dollars left over, but basically, yeah. Because they got bid out for that much. I mean, that's what they raised.
Oh, yeah. If you got that much, then it's, it's gonna cost that much. The old territory.
About 100, 30,000.
Oh, yeah, and then what? They're gonna put it on the.
Told them that we will put $75,000 here and, and match theirs if they can come up with the other 75,000 to their fundraising and grants. And they brought up, well, what about Wiccan Hall? But they don't realize that the tax, taxpayers of Swansea only paid 23% to be on this hall. The rest of the. While with his group.
Donations, yeah. Yeah, I was on that committee, a lot of just donations from everybody.
We directed them to go there. And I had tried to work with them myself and show them ways to raise revenue. But they don't wanna do it. They had their bluegrass festival, which you guys may know, lost money the last two years. But they insist on doing it again. And I said, if you wanna do something along that lines, why aren't you going out? This April cushman, I don't know, maybe people love her, they're tapping down the snow. They're very, very popular in this area. And they would drive a dark cloud. You might have to pay a little bit, but you pay the bluegrass people that come in too. So that's, I would negative both years on that.
It's too bad.
And I imagine gun rants from my turn of guns.
Didn't like that.
I, I raised it for my other committee, my Republican committee.
Yeah.
We do gun rants, and we made a ton of money.
Yeah.
Thirty guns in 30 days, you buy a $10 ticket and you can win all 30 days if it's possible. It don't usually happen, but one year I want two.
It's up to them.
Yeah, so we have to do some more work next week on the road, rehabilitation stuff because Webber Hill Road now has a issue where we don't know if we're gonna go. We gotta shore up the site because we're afraid of the bolts getting, everybody goes, Webber Hill Road, we gotta fall into a self road. So we gotta shore that up somehow. We don't know how expensive that is yet, so we gotta try to work some money on that. And the other one, the bridge down here costs $550,000 more than was actually targeted for. So we gotta work, try to work, I don't think we can recover all, but we're gonna try to recover what we can.
Put a toll up there.
Yeah.
Well, it's more expensive than damaging the top.
I don't know, did you see it when they were working on it? I walked across that every single day. And there wasn't that much damage.
Oh.
And they took it out and where they repl, I don't know if you saw how they replaced the cracks and that in there and some of the new cement. The crack line followed it right in the new cement there, which, whether or not I heard anything, I doubt it because I'm sure they inspected it before they.
But you have to work with roads, it's, it's, it's gonna cost tons of money.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, that's a lot more than.
Because one year, some of the people up on the hill, the firemen wanted to count the pavement. So I wouldn't sign it because I didn't know what it cost. It cost a million dollars by half a mile of penny. Because you have to lay down a bed. It doesn't help.
Yeah, well.
But that's what we got.
That's where you're at. Okay.
That's one reason why I want the impact fees to, that I think we can really accomplish forward and make a positive effect on people's taxes.
We're starting right, right in March. I got it on my list.
I did give everybody the RSA that covers that so they can look at it.
Oh, yeah.
If you know what you have to do. But also, we're talking about the young couples that wanna build a single family home. We can, I believe, I look at it a little bit more, Adam, that we can put a waiver program in there where somebody really doesn't have the money, the selectmen would have the opportunity to reduce the fee or to give it to you on an individual basis.
They can do that anyway, right? They abate people's taxes if you come in.
Well, you have to be in the RSA.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they can lower the taxes if they can.
But it's not in the RSA, it's not in the RSA or is in the RSA about the selectmen having the authority.
There's something, yeah, it's, I believe it is. I read something a lot, I wanna do some more reading on it. Like you, Scott, I got too many committees going on right now.
Quit, right? Say, I'm done. We're gonna be done pretty soon. And it brings us to the other committees. Let's see, we've got the, the fire committee, actually, the new fire station committee. Where we're at now is that the architect has come back with the, the plans. And we were at the selectmen's meeting last night, presented it to them. And they took a look at it and I guess they think it's okay. So we're gonna meet with the architect on Monday and with the site guy on Monday and see if we can't figure out what it's gonna cost to build it and then get that. That's the last thing, thing that we need. The committee is gonna put out short, like two minute long segments on the Facebook page, I think it is, isn't it, Mark? Facebook page, Swansea Facebook page.
On the, on the town of Swansea's.
It'll be, I think, on the town of Swansea page, but there'll be links from Facebook pages or other social media sites.
Mark and Jay worked on that and they put a nice video together. Or several of them, we saw preview of them, they're gonna be out until January.
I'd say Mark, Jay and Jay worked on that.
And what?
Mark, Jay and Jay.
And Jay.
Jay, Jay really.
Oh, he did a lot.
He did a lot.
He did a lot on there.
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
So for education.
So that's what's going on, yeah. It's gonna explain what the committee.
Sometimes I'm just motivation.
We're also gonna do, yeah, on Saturday, we're gonna have open houses at.
Station two.
Two, so I can see what we're talking about.
And that'll be noted on those. So in January, at some point, we expect those to come out. And, and by that time, there should be a bit of a figure as to what it's gonna cost to build it. So then go along with it and then it'll be on to town meeting after that.
Right now, at CNBC, we've got 3.75 is a placeholder till we find out this time.
Yeah, well, we're hoping it's gonna be a little bit less than that.
Yeah.
And it should be.
Available call.
That's a good, that's a good number now.
So, so that's where we're at. And it might be that the committee won't be doing too much after that. So that might be good in there. The TIF committee, which is right from here, the Tax Increment Finance District down here. We're looking at, again, that's for the water company, mainly for the town to somehow purchase that water company over there. So right now, we're looking at the possibility of if the town does it, to run a pipe over to Viewpoint with like 100 homes over there and hook Viewpoint up and get like 100 more users on it right off the bat. And if the town takes it over, it'll be useless without extra storage because it's at storage capacity. I think I've told you before, it's a storage capacity for the tank. It's not at that production capacity. That well will put out way more water than we'd ever probably use. But storage, we have to have storage there. So another thing being considered is putting a water tower up behind Viewpoint up there and tying right into their system, back fitting it into our system, if it ends up being our system, and creating a system that way. So we're gonna meet on Tuesday, I think it is. And they've spoken, I think, I think Mike Branley probably, and one of the selectmen spoke to Viewpoint up there and they had a little meeting on it. And I don't know what came out of that, but we're gonna find out. So that's where it's at.
It's a rustful, full handout back there.
Yeah, so.
Might be a question, might wanna contact up to one for a tower.
We'll see if there's, yeah, see how much viewpoint for the water homes up there. Because the other point, let's see, they had talked about Christian Hill for a water tower over here. And Christian Hill are on this side of the river. And it looks like Christian Hill is probably out because there's not a whole heck of a lot. You're gonna run a whole bunch of pipe up there and aren't gonna be very, be very many houses that's gonna go by to hook up there. But Christian Hill is about 85 feet higher than the back lot of Viewpoint. So if you wanted the same water capacity, same water pressure, which would be about 78 pounds if you're gonna put it up on top of Christian Hill, just with gravity, we'd have to put it on like an 80 foot tower back there to get the same amount. So it, if it's, if it's not put on a tower, just a tank, using pressure wise, we'd probably get around, say 50 pounds of pressure, gravity out of it. But there's still pressure tanks. Viewpoint has their own pressure tanks there. And the water company has one 10,000 gallon pressure tank. It looks like Viewpoint's, I think, maybe two 10,000 or two 5,000. But anyway, that's an extra capacity there too, so that's being considered. So it might be, that, that might be the way to do it over there. And they're looking at funding to get to extend a water, municipal water system to that community over there which needs water.
Are they on wells? Each lot is on a?
They're, no, no, they've got their own wells. Viewpoint dug their own, I think it's one or two wells up there.
Okay, so be replacing, so there, there are, there are lines.
And they're within like less than a quarter of a mile from these wells here and they don't have enough water.
Okay.
Quarter mile away, you've got so much water that you don't know what to do with.
Yeah.
But you never know.
Well, it has to do with there and the, the mill put their wells in that coarse gravel area up there. They had it, they, whoever did that survey for them knew what they were doing to put those wells there. Because, yeah, just a little ways away in that, the aquifer is under that whole area. It's just that it doesn't transverse through the ground very quickly where Viewpoint is. Whereas where the mill put theirs, it's real heavy gravel in there and it transfers quickly through there and it just replenishes all the time. So whoever did that one.
My neighbor had a well 125 feet deep. 200 feet away was my well, 585 feet.
Yeah.
Sounds good, right?
So that's where we're at with the water TIF system, has to do with the water company.
Scott, if you were to put it up there, all those houses down through Christian Hill have their own wells.
Yeah, they do, I know.
Would you force them onto them?
That, I brought that up more in the meeting today, you know, what are you gonna do? You're gonna force people to go on the system? Because they did with the sewer. When they put the sewer through, you had to, but, but it's a whole different ballgame with the, the water company. And I don't know that they can really do that. They probably could buy ordinance, but try and get the 60% vote to buy the water company when you're gonna force people to be on that system and probably not gonna do it.
Harder argument.
Yeah.
I would be trying to.
If they know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We came 13 years ago by a pump.
So, but, but the viewpoint up there, if they hooked on there, there's, like I said, 100 extra users. There are around 200 and some odd users on it now. So that'd boost it by a third probably or.
Any farms they shouldn't make because we use so much water that it costs effectively tomorrow.
So we'll see how it ends up there, you know, whether it ends up in the town's hands or not.
It was about 200 gallons a day.
You do?
Do you farm?
Me only two donkeys.
They drink 200 gallons a day.
You would believe, especially in the summertime, you would believe.
I've got 12 cow and they drink like 40 gallons.
Cause metabolism is sore.
Wow. That's fast.
Okay, anything else?